We're gonna bring him up a little bit later. Councilwoman Winn has to leave at six o'clock, so we wanna hear this very important discussion. Uh, so, um, the facilitator for this discussion, uh, is our great, uh, accomplished journalist, who needs no introduction, Mr. Jeff Thomas, and we appreciate him for being here tonight.
All right.
Thank you, Thomas. (laughing) Thank five oh four, yes, sir.
Well, I wanna thank you all for letting me come share with the passing back the special council member, Gwen, who let me know from Long Island to the friends. And so it's my pleasure to be here, talk to her, and see what's happening in the east, alright? Alright, so, now, one of the things, you just took, you just took a trip to Columbia with, uh, GNO Inc., uh, it's a business exchange. Can you tell me about why you went, and what happened, and how the city benefits, and how the district benefits?
Well, first of all, thank you for having me here, um, and Jeff, uh, really great, uh, having this conversation with you. Jeff and I have known each other for a minute or two, through a couple boards together, and, and now having the opportunity to really work together and make a difference in the east. And so, when the trip came, I was like, oh, man, I, you know, I wanna be able to go out there and see what other people are doing. To learn, I'm, I'm a huge fan of learning. I'm maybe fifty next year, and, uh, thank you, thank you. But learning is something that I feel like you just never get enough. And so, learning is really the key that draw me to this trip. When I look at the expense, I was like, man, don't wanna put this on the taxpayer, it is way too expensive. Now, I was gonna go to Cuba, I decided not to go, maybe the cost of the financing. It was expensive, so this trip was about twenty-four hundred, included everything, so... What I walk away from it, that I'm bringing back to the east, is eight million people, no trash on the street. Eight million people, hardly any trash on the streets in Columbia. So, it really got me saying, well, we can be another city, we can be another district, right? Cause if, if people are able to do it over there, we should be able to do it over here. Second thing I brought, took away was the fact that it connected me to the, to the community more of the contact that when we push out a project, we need to connect with community members. I knew that going, didn't see it all the time in the city of New Orleans, not with every project. I saw it in Colombia. So, quick story, so they told us that they're gonna give us a tour of the cable line, the, the new transportation that they just installed in Bogota, Colombia. So, my immediate thought is, oh, we're gonna go to an upper-class community. We actually went to the most underserving community there, where they actually invested over four, forty-five billion dollars into this new cable line to make sure that underserved communities have access and connected to resources. So, that was already impressive, and I'm like, that gotta be, they probably just went in here, did it, and then engaged the community. So, we had an opportunity to talk to a few people there, that's like, oh, no, when the company and the country decides to do this, it comes to the community, we were part of the design, the planning, and everything, even job creation. I thought that was very impressive. It reminds me of what we should do when we push out big projects, particularly in my district, to make sure that people are engaged, people have access to opportunity. I think it's just, just a reminder for me, more than anything. But it's, uh, opportunity to network with other people that were on the trip. So, we work day, eight days a week, twenty-five hours a day, I believe. Uh, but we don't really get to know each other, so we're always fighting, challenging each other, criticizing, you know, whatever. But I got an opportunity to interact with members of the GNO Inc., you know, members of, of, you know, we got to know Senator, State, uh, Senator Trump, or... And, and this having that positive relationship was very impressive. And, and I wanna thank you guys for giving me that opportunity to go, uh, well, taking those ideas and working. One thing that I, you will be hearing me talk about that I walk away from the Columbia trip is how people live with water over there. So, uh, I mean, it's quite impressive, uh, how, cause there's, like, there was no water on the street. We didn't, it rained, but we talked to a lot of people back there, and they're like, well, you know, we recycle a lot of our water. And it's just, and, and we saw this in the most poorest community in Colombia. And so, what I, what I started doing when I got back was, I looked at Roundy Court and Curran, I'm gonna pick another site over here, the L nine, we kinda do a pilot program, we brought these to those areas that flood, how can we use rain barrels to help recycle water and to prevent that air from flooding? And so, we started meeting with some nonpartake organizations like Goff Waterwise, the life, the City of Greenlight that's gonna be touring the area with me, and collaborating on how do we really put systemic change into that neighborhood. So, quite a lot of stuff.
Uh, yeah, I'm glad you said that about, cause with friends like me, you might not get any of this, because I was just thinking, you had to go all the way to Columbia to talk to Cora Carter, but I'm glad that you said, I'm glad that you said the water, and, and how, you know, they live with water and work with water, cause that's an important thing for us, and kinda segues, I think, into, uh, this is my next question for you, and, and that is infrastructure. And how do you think, what do you think we can do, uh, in New Orleans East, uh, to, to handle rainwater damage? Do you think there's something we can do to pump the water out? Um, do you have any specific plans in New Orleans East?
Yeah, I think there's several things, I think the rain barrels, one, particularly as citizens, that we could actually participate and play a role in making sure that your neighborhood, um, doesn't, uh, flood. I think there's also other ways of making sure, you hear it all the time, to make sure that cash basins are clear. Um, and so, we are working with different neighborhoods to adopt a cash basin in that area. And I tell people that with this, if it's too hard, let me know that I can bring it to the services, but if it's just a matter of sweeping, I think that's something as citizens that we can contribute. I don't think that's too much to ask. I think at the end of the day, there's, there's a need for infrastructure running.
Well, you know, New Orleans East has been, in my estimation, really spad from a lot of the flooding. Why is New Orleans East bad? Why, is there something with the topography, or are we higher in the east?
I think most of our drainage system is much newer than the city, from what, I'm not an engineer, but from what I was told. And, and I think because of the green space that we have in the east, not just in the east, but in the Lower Nine. I know the Lower Nine took air floods, but I think we do it fairly well. The city, uptown, mid-city are basically on top of each other. You know, when they start bringing all these development projects, they didn't realize that, you know, that you're taking away green space. So, I think more so than anything, the city needs to look at carefully as we approve projects, particularly downtown, mid-city, uptown, that they need to look at green space. So, I think that could be one way of us helping particularly neighborhoods that are flooded. Uh, you know, we're gonna be doing a tree planting in the east, uh, I think November the ninth. So, I'm always exploring ways, even though most of the air, most of the space in the east, uh, we don't flood, but I wanna make sure that we continue to be that vital as a neighborhood. I don't wanna take it for granted, because as soon as you take it for granted, you know, the east is gonna flood, right?
One of the things that I thought was really important that happened in, in the east is this lot next door program, and one of your predecessors, I think it was Willard Lewis, who's before James Gray, uh, introduced and got passed. And so, one of the things you see in New Orleans East is people with these lots next to their houses, which are huge. I, I always thought that the city was, in part of the original planning on this lot next door, that the city was gonna incorporate some water usage with those lots. Is there anything happening with that now, or?
No, so, my understanding is that most of the lot next doors is from Nora, so it has to be a Nora lot. Uh, and I know we're, uh, been in communication with Nora to restart the program, uh, but I don't think there's a requirement for, for our management strategy at all, it's just...
There is nothing, I thought that that was part of the long-range plan, and I'm wondering if that's something that maybe you're interested in, or you think it would be beneficial?
I think that, and I'm always, I try not to, I feel like we can't push people to do what they own, so it's kinda like the government trying to regulate them. Uh, because I know our clients feel differently, want to take off my city council hat, if somebody come and tell me what I should do with my property. Uh, but I think we need to educate people, invite them to supporting your neighborhood, and give them a sense of that I'm contributing to my neighborhood and not being forced to. Nobody, where all of us are dealt. And I'll be very candid, before I got into the city government, I'm a city girl, I concrete everything. I concrete everything.
It's not good.
I know, oh, I know that, and, and I'll be the first to admit to it, but I had to learn really hard, and I've seen areas that struggle, but if you were gonna push this idea out to me, I would not do it, cause I'm just stubborn, stubborn. And so, when you look at, when you think about it, if you want, really want people to get your ideas, you gotta show them the benefit. Everybody's always looking for a gain, you know, what, how this is gonna impact me? And I think that's where I think Cassie mentioned about respect. So, when we're pushing an idea, you just can't expect people like, they should get it, because we got it, you know? And so, and I say that, and I feel learning about it, I, you know, rain barrel came to me about twenty months ago when I first got to office, it just didn't dawn on me until now. And I'll be very candid, and I, I see the value in it, and I think I, I've seen enough incident in, in my district that people are suffering, family are, are being basically, uh, tied up when there's a rain, because they can't get out of their parking lot, and it's very frustrating. And I'm not an engineer, uh, but I'm always exploring that, and so we're definitely gonna be moving on this. I hope that when you guys hear about this, you guys can say, you know what, she mentioned it at our meeting already, cause I haven't even announced it, I'm just in the planning stage, and, uh, and we're gonna try it. You know, we definitely, and I think this is a way of encouraging people to, to play a role. You know, uh, people have this disconnect in city government, and I wanna find a fun way, a way that they can connect, that they can feel that they can get impact of city government.
Oh, great. Now, you serve on the, uh, what's committee, the, the utility committee?
No, I don't.
No, the transportation committee, yes, that's my question. So, you know, a lot of the people who live in New Orleans East are dependent upon the RCA. And right after Katrina, it was tough catching a bus from the east. I know recently, they have expanded some routes and added some buses. Can you tell us what's happening with that?
And, and it's still very challenging to catch a bus from the east. Uh, I can tell you this, cause I actually caught a bus, um, and it's cause I wanted to kinda feel what people were going through. And I heard about it when I got on the transportation committee. Took me about hour and a half to catch a bus from Buller, uh, to Connect. An hour and a half, that's very unacceptable. So, I, I do fully understand, and not only that, but many of the shelters in the, in the areas on the east of the L nine is not sufficient, uh, particularly in our senior citizen area. So, as you guys know, Alex Wiggins is the new RCA director. And so, Alex and I, uh, hung out last week, and I gave him a tour of my district. It was funny, because we were talking about, I was like, you know what, Alex, I just thought, it doesn't make sense when you have those extended bus, uh, in neighborhoods, because they really destroy our infrastructure, our streets. And he said, I was thinking, we don't really use that anymore. And I said, turn around, and right behind us was an extended bus. And I said to Alex, I said, listen, you know, we, we really gotta be up, um, making sure that, uh, public transportation, because many people depend on public transportation. I'll be very candid, I could be naive, but prior to catching that bus, didn't realize a number of people was catching the bus. And so, I got on it, sat there, talked, and asked, I was like, why are you catching the bus? You know, so this is my only means of transportation. And I was that, but we also have issues in the L nine, where I think there used to be a very bus that would come to, uh, relocate the lease, and so, and so we're working to make sure that our senior citizen, uh, residents there that are disabled will have access to the public transportation, and they don't have to walk two, three blocks to catch it, that they will be able to have access to it. But there's a lot of issues that need to be made, I get that, uh, well, I think Alex is gonna do a wonderful job. He is hosting ferries and listening tour around the city. I wanna encourage you guys to take a visit to others, if that is something that is very important, dear to you, please make sure you get on and attend one of the listening tours, or that way you can also express your concern.
Well, you mentioned seniors.
Well, everyone, uh, we're gonna take questions from the audience for Councilwoman Winn, uh, at about five forty, and so, please remember that there is a basket on the left side of the stage and the right side of the stage. If you have a question, please fill out an index card, drop it in there, I'll hand it straight to the moderator's table.
Five forty?
Uh, five forty, five forty.
Okay, well, I got a few more questions that I'd like to hear. So, so, I wanna talk to you about, you, you mentioned seniors, and the Lyft has always been a problem. Seniors have to wait hours and hours, and then sometimes don't get picked up. What are we gonna do to get this Lyft situation straight? It's federally funded, and so, why can't we get that?
Federally funded?
Federally funded? Why can't we get that working right? That is a problem, now seniors who rely upon, and for those who you don't know, the Lyft will, is, is a small bus that goes, you, you, a senior can register for the program, can have them be picked up at their house, brought to a destination, it has to be scheduled two or three days in advance, so it's not likely to surprise to the RCA. And, and so, uh, and then sometimes seniors are left at their doctor's appointments and not picked up. We, we need to get this straight, what are we gonna do about that?
Well, first of all, wasn't aware of it, um, to be very candid, it was mentally brought to my attention, but I would definitely follow it with Alex.
Yeah, I think you should, thank you.
Yes.
So, now, I know you're aware of this with the RCA, it's ferries on Canal Street, we spent millions and millions of dollars, and we can't get them working, what's going on with that?
So, it is my understanding that we're gonna have a new RCA, some new contractors, so... And that should tell you that the contractor that they had was not doing their job. That is, is just the reality of it, and that's what I was saying. And so, you may see that there be changing leadership, inviting to the contractors to provide maintenance on the streets. Ferry was not, they did not keep a proper maintenance service, that it shouldn't be.
Well, I, I think I'll give it time, maybe one more question.
Yeah, two more.
Two more, okay, good. So, Amendment Four, the state constitution, alright? Will allow, if it's passed, will allow the state to offer property tax exemptions, uh, but the problem is, we don't know, there is no plan from the city. But the amendment gives the city local control over property taxes to an extent, although we have no real plan. Can you tell me your position on Amendment Four, and what do you think about it?
So, I'm, I'm in support of proposition number four. Uh, affordability is something that we've been fighting way before. I think it's more prevalent and it's, uh, a major issue in, in our cities, property taxes, it's going up. And I think that since this is a city in New Orleans problem, then we should be able to set laws for our city. Uh, and so, I do ask that you guys support that. I think it also helps us to make sure that there's, you know, and I think once we balance out housing programs, then there, we can make it more affordable. I think there's been some ideas of capping off, you know, the census in reference to how high your property tax will go up in a year, you know, to make sure that it's affordable for our local residents as well. But it just give us the ability to set those housing laws for our local residents. People in Shreveport may not understand where we're coming from, but they're not happy to pay the high property taxes as we are, and many of our communities are, are happy to do. And so, I think proposition four is, is a good proposition, and again, I do ask that you pick up the phone, call your family in front of the Shreveport, tell them to stay out of our business, with people, yes, and let us take care of our people in the city of New Orleans. And we're not gonna, it's not gonna impact that in any way.
Okay, now, my last tough question, Jeff. Now, the Alliance for Affordable Energy, this is about the gas plant of New Orleans, in your district. They estimate that the actual cost is gonna be around seven hundred billion dollars, instead of what the, the energy price that they suggest is two hundred and forty million. If there are cost overruns, how do we ensure that those rates, those costs don't get passed on the ratepayers?
Um, it's not gonna go over, and if it's gonna go over, they don't have to either, that's it.
So, so if it costs two hundred and sixty million, energy pays that cost, and doesn't cost the ratepayers any? But part of the contract gives them some leeway in terms of change orders, how do you handle change orders?
I think that's something that, uh, should be at the utility committee, that should be addressed. And I know council member, Elaine Moreno, is watching it very carefully to make sure that it doesn't go over.
Alright, I guess I'm done, now, we got some questions from the audience, right?
Follow up at any time, we can, we've got five questions right now from the audience, six questions from the audience.
David Jones?
Remember, if your name is at the top of your index cards, we will call on you to raise a question about ninety seconds. If it's not at the top of the index cards, we will simply ask.
So, you can help me understand the city government a lot better. The city of New Orleans has an Office of Resilience and Sustainability. Many of the ideas that you're bringing from Columbia, I know they're working on within that office. I'm gonna be at an interfaith meeting tomorrow at Gallier Hall, uh, with a lot of interfaith leaders, and one of the things we're gonna be talking about is resilience, sustainability, and echo justice, and what we're gonna do. My, my question to you is, how do you relate as a city councilperson with that office? Because it seems to me that I, as an interfaith leader, need to have someone in the city government, some kind of a station there where I can always be talking to about those issues.
Yeah, and actually, thank you for making that connection for me, cause I did, I should connect to what Anna's office, and I work with Anna, and she's the director.
I'm sorry.
So, Anna is the director of Resiliency and Sustainability, so I do work with her. Uh, we've been heavily working together on Lincoln Beach, uh, that we're looking at the environmental, uh, issues and cleaning Lincoln Beach, but it just didn't dawn on me that you brought it up, so thank you. I will make sure that Anna is involved, uh, the more people involved, the better, because it just kinda opened up information and all that, but potential resources that could actually bring to this idea, because more than likely, we will have some families that may not be able, or cannot afford the rain barrel, and we wanna be able to, not to give them any reasons that can't do it. You know, uh, we wanna be able to come up with alternative, uh, options that we can help them with it. But thank you very much for sharing that, and, and I'll make sure I can connect with Anna.
Next, Mrs. Stan.
Hello.
Hi, Dave.
I, I understand you're gonna be a, a transportation committee, and I would suggest to you, wait in Comino, go check out that St. Charles line, it was a total mess with the, uh, construction. You know, they're letting people out all over the bus to just detouring and not stopping traffic. Late, late at night, crowds of people at Howard Avenue waiting for transportation. It is really atrocious.
By Howard?
By Howard. So, it needs to really check it out, you're going from bus to trolley to bus. I mean, it is absolutely, yes, I, I, I've never seen anything like it. And my other question is, has rent control ever been talked about, thought about, or considered in the city?
I don't know if you could do that or not, yeah, I don't think we could do that, sir, I think, yeah. I'm not an attorney, but I, I've been a lawyer, I don't think you can do that, so...
You don't want?
I think it's in law, yeah, yeah, big constitution, yeah. Just, I mean, I don't know if you could actually interfere with commerce, in a way, controlling the market, you gotta let the market, and, and you could control it, or shift the market in a way that you want it to look like, but I think that's one of the reasons why we want it, particularly around the housing, where we, we provide, uh, a housing program, and we're looking at capping off all sorts of stuff to make sure that it's affordable for everybody. So, I think that goes back to proposition number four, is that it just allows, uh, the city to have that conversation of setting laws and not having to abide by state laws right now. Yeah.
I, I wanna just, uh, piggyback real, real quick on what Mr. Stan said about the buses and the streetcar, real quick. Um, it, it's about trading for the RCA drivers. Uh, I rode the streetcar in St. Charles Bus Line on Saturday, I believe, and down, down to the French Quarter, and was coming back to the French Quarter, and, and going uptown, and the bus pulls up, and all the poor little tourists are expecting the streetcar, beautiful, pretty streetcar, the bus comes up, and it's still standing there, and, and nobody told them anything, so, it was not a word. And the bus, when it comes time for the streetcar people to transfer to the bus, nobody on the streetcar says, alright, tourists, you gotta get on the bus now, so everybody's still standing there, looking like they don't know what to do. Uh, and so, in a city that, uh, relies upon our tourists, and not only for the tourists, but for those of us who ride, uh, uh, the metro, uh, the, the system, then people need to be educated better, and, and that's part of the reason why it's a mess, because the drivers are not communicating with the passengers, so...
Alright, thank you.
Very long, very quickly, Jeff, you're lying on repeat number six, we need to tell the tourists, like, yeah, that's not an all stop, yeah, yeah, thank you.
No, I agree, and I agree with what Cassie said, that as a city, we need to be more welcoming. I think, for city government employees, I think there's that, it's big money, and we're, you know, we really don't want you guys to be here. And we need to change that attitude, you know? I come to the space of work, I'm being really excited about serving community, and every city government employee should be the same. If you unhappy, stay home.
Yes.
You know, get another J O B.
That's right.
You know, but if you're there serving, then you should do it, you know, with fun, excitement, you know? And I don't know what else to do, you know? And I think training is something that I did talk to Alex about, cause when we were on our tour, and he saw a bus driver texting. Yeah, so that was a flag, you know? And so, that's why I do a lot of tours with the writers, so they could see what's really out in the community, and that community members are not just making it up, you know? And so, when he saw that, he's like, I can't believe this, and we saw they extended bus in our neighborhood in the east, he's like, well, we're not supposed to be using this, I think what's happening. So, but education is something, and I think it's, it's also changing people's behavior. I don't want nobody to lose their job, some, you know, I don't wanna put out the wrong message. But just because you work for city government, and they pay you at this rate, and I know rate salary is an issue as well. At the end of the day, if you, if you're willing to accept this position, you gotta do it with the right attitude.
I agree, ma'am.
And that's just me.
Thank you. The next question is this, can you give us an update about dumping in the east? And the second part, what kind of data is available for people to analyze the issue on their own?
Um, I don't think we have any data on dumping. I know we have data on equal justice reform ticket, and then we just updated our database in reference to, we just had last week, uh, that we are providing, oh, the number of municipal tickets, uh, cause I think there was a big issue about how do we, people are, uh, got old tickets, and there's warrant out there, and it should be, and they're being charged with fines and fees, so we're trying to clean that up. I don't think there's any data on dumping. In reference to dumping, I wanna continue to encourage you to, when you see dumping, call nine-one-one, you know? Uh, recently, LDQ, uh, we just made another, uh, prosecution on a case where we found this person, I think thirty-nine-year-old dumping in the east. Uh, and so, I'm very blessed to have a very aggressive team with LDQ that they're forcing those groups, but we, many times, we can't follow where they're dumping, you know? And so, that's why we wanna ask citizens to help us, when you see dumping, call, report it, just don't turn your head. Uh, and then, not only that, but help educate others, like, listen, hey, you have furniture? You could leave it in front of your house in a second pickup, just call them, they'll come get it. You don't have to sneak around the neighborhood and try to find a place to dump it. Uh, but I know that there is a need for a place for people to dump, particularly tires. Uh, you know, tire is also a major issue in, in the district, and I just believe that the state and the city needs to come together and look at doing a public private partnership, and develop a tire recycling company that we could actually produce, create jobs for a lot of our young people that are coming out. I think it's, and not with that, but been doing a lot of research, that they could actually take... furniture and matching everything. We need a robust workforce development idea to address some of the quality of life that we have.
Another question from my side. The lights in the east. What could we do to change whatever policy that was put in place for a third-party company that's supposed to be handling these lights?
Yeah, so, the first thing, we could, you know, the group that's cutting the wire up there, we actually had two incidents where the city had to place a wire on I-10, particularly in the east, connecting from, I think, the high-rise all the way through the east. They cut the copper wire twice. I think so. And then secondly, we need to explore more solar lights out here. So that way, they don't have to deal with the dust and the cutting of the wire. I think, I believe we saw that the state is taking up new lights off of I-10. I think the issue's gonna be addressed very soon. I'm not aware of the issues that we have with contractors, Sylvia. You could let my office know a little bit more. And I'm not defending any contractor or any entity. I think there's, and we've been very heavily involved. There was seventy-eight light poles that was out because of energy. They had to fix their power parts in order for the city to turn it on. So we had to get behind energy and make sure that they do their part. And then when you get to the city, it could be, didn't have the money to turn it on. I'll be very candid. You know, turn it on. But we've been dealing with a lot of these issues to make sure that lights are on. I know our mayor is totally aware of it. And I think that we're changing out the lighting system up there to avoid theft. Because we did have two incidents where we had individual individuals that actually cut the copper wire that caused the whole blackout in the area that I was aware of.
Thank you. The next question asks, why was Columbia chosen? Is it below sea level, lighting warnings?
No, I didn't even thought about it. Yeah, I, 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 I thought of Columbia as a way of learning what that country has to offer. I think I went originally just to be, just wanting to learn. Wasn't very specific in the areas, but when I got there, I saw what connects communities most is really the people. Because that's what I really believe, is the people that really makes up the community and how they were doing this. And another thing I wanted to add to our Columbia conversation was the fact that it was all small business establishments there. You know how we're like big on big names over here? They were all small entrepreneurs and how they work together. And that is something that I continue to believe in in reference to really supporting our small business owners to make sure that, because you can't be a big boss until you start somewhere, right? So you gotta groom your own big boss. And I believe in grooming our own in our communities, yeah. But the economic engine of it was very impressive over there as well.
And the second part to the question states, the mayor has had a keep New Orleans trash free since she started running. Why go to Columbia for that?
Well, it didn't get that sort of...
The keep New Orleans trash free? The mayor has had a keep New Orleans trash free since she started running. Why go to Columbia for that?
Well, as I say, that I went with the learning. And learning is very important. It's very important to me as a person. It's important for me to make sure that I continue to condition myself with the concept of engaging. And I know everybody has their own opinion about if I should have went or not. But if you, if I'm a council member, I want, I guess for me, is to allow me an opportunity to learn. You know, and sometimes we got to get out of our own area to see what other people are doing to make it look really sense, to make it sensible. And then how do you, how do you have time away and just say, okay, look at the district and, you know, when we were over there, I continued to think about District E, on how we could do better when we get back. And while I evaluated both trips to like this trip because it was more public. It was, yeah, so.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Lynn.
Hi, my question is, can you tell us more about the return of Mardi Gras parades in the east? And do you know of any corporate sponsors and how did this come about?
The what? The return of what?
Of Mardi Gras parades.
Oh, yes. So, so the Crew of Neptunian is a sponsor parade. It is not a city Mardi Gras parade. I know there was some confusion out there. I wish it was because I believe this should be. But I, but when the Crew of Neptunian came to my office wanting to ride in the east, we wanted them to ride during Mardi Gras season. But because of the number of parades that's already on schedule and the stress that was already stressing out our manpower, I told Crew of Neptunian that if we're gonna make this happen, we can't put more stress onto our city resources. So they're riding on February the ninth, which means that they are gonna fund a hundred percent of all expenses. They're gonna pay for their police officers, they're gonna pay for their cleanup. And so to me is, in a way, the east should be in a sponsor city parade. But when I came to the table and when the committee expressed their frustration and their concern about adding another parade, I got them. And so a lot of the decisions we made is always about fear. And, and so we, I'm very blessed that the Crew of Neptunian was willing, even though they have to raise over fifty thousand to make this happen for the people in the east. And so when you guys see them, please thank them. Because they didn't have to do this. They didn't have to do this. But I really believe, and I mentioned this to many people on my first campaign, there is stuff in the east that used to happen. And if I could bring it back, I'm gonna do everything I can. But if I can't, then we're gonna have to move on. And I, I didn't have to make this happen. You know, but if it wasn't for the cooperation with Crew of Neptunian willing to raise fifty thousand, you know, I think they deserve a pat in the back, guys.
Amen.
Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. Do you have time for one more question? Mr. Irvin?
I just wanted to bring up the RTA Riders Advisory Committee meets the first Wednesday of every month at Canal Street, April Randolph Station. The meeting starts at five-thirty P.M. And it is open to the public. And I would request that anybody that has any concerns, please make this meeting and come express yourself. I will also have to say that one of the problems that a lot of the operators have is that there is not enough time on the schedules to really accommodate the people. They just have the bus and the streetcars going around and around in circles. And if you have to use your telephone to contact the company for any reason, they require you to stop the bus, get up out of the seat to call a company. So that's another thing with the, thing with the phones. But I just had to bring that up. Thank you, and thank you, Councilmember Lynn, for everything you do.
Alright. Any comment on that last comment, Councilwoman?
Well, first of all, I just want to thank God for giving me this opportunity. And I hope that if you feel like you're not connected to my office in any way, please feel free to reach out. I have always been very open to meeting with people. And I'm always, and this is something about me, I'm always gonna want to learn. Either here, in New Orleans, street courts, out of state, wherever. But I am working on putting a trip together to Vietnam. That, again, days that I walk away from Columbia. And you know, as you guys work with people of different colors, we're very diverse here. But if we don't get to know each other in a way, then there's always those barriers. And I know I'm like the only Asian person here. And so, the Columbia trip taught me that when I come, go back to North to the States, I want to be able to connect with people that don't know me. I want to be able to show them who I am. And we may not disagree with it, but I think at the end of the day, all of us wants a better community for all of us. And so I am working on putting a trip together for Vietnam, particularly around cultural learning and exchange and workforce development. And I think this, for those that have always wondered or explored, I hope that you will consider it. We're trying to make it as most costly effective as possible for people to be able to sign on. But I think it's about sharing. And sometimes we all don't all learn one way. Some of us need to take a trip. Some of us need to take a break. Some of us need to step back. But it doesn't mean that they're not good people. So, and I just kind of sensed that it maybe is the artist that they were concerned about me taking the trip. I, I'm gonna do what I believe is best for my district. I've always been very responsible in reference to financing. I operate a family with six children. And I've always been very mindful of using other people's money. I ran a nonprofit for nineteen years. And so, and I think it's just a matter of us doing trust. And if you ever feel like there's something that we're doing that is not right, don't ever hesitate. And believe me, I will still talk to you after that as well. We're probably much closer than anything. Because I want to change city government, particularly District E office, that we're transparent, we want to engage with you. But there, but everybody has to be at the table. And then we just can't complain about it, we've got to be part of the solution. So thank you again.
Again, thank you, Councilmember Lynn. We appreciate your time and for being here tonight. We're gonna welcome to the stage now Councilman Jay Banks, who's gonna talk with us as well too, as he is interviewed by Mr. Jeff Thomas. Just so we can be respectful to our guest, Councilman Jay Banks on the stage. If you have conversations that are going on, please take it outside the room. If you are standing in the back of the room, please feel free. There's plenty of chairs up front, helps us have a better conversation if you are in the room. If you're talking, please take it outside.
Alright, so we're on a timed schedule, so I'll go quickly into my first question. First thing I'd like you to do, Councilmember Banks, is give us an update on the radiation in your town. Is it all going, what's going on with that?
It is going, it is going to, by now, let me give you just a quick bit of background. I did nothing up to right here. And it's a, it's really an unfortunate thing that that was discovered prior to the Super Bowl. And D E Q broke its feet in not having it removed. I think it's definitely a hit. But to my knowledge, that has been remediated. To my knowledge, that has been done other times. But it's really unfortunate and we need to understand likely what happened. Now, if you have any delusion that because we elected a black president, that somehow racism, bigotry, hatred, discrimination went away. And the fact that someone felt very comfortable putting that in the street in the heart of a black neighborhood, this illustrates where a long way this country has to go. And believe me, that it was no accident that it was put there. Whoever had it likely was supposed to dispose of it in a proper way. And they dumped it under the street. They covered it up. And had it not been for the nine-eleven terrorists and the whole way that the world shifted, we probably would not know that it was even there. Because when they came to do the sweep for the Super Bowl is when they found it. So I'm glad that it was found. I'm sorry that it was there. I hope that there are no others, but believe me, this world has a long way to go with being equal for all of us. And that's just one illustration of how unfair things can be.
Now, let's just to property taxes. So, you know, everybody's property taxes just went up dramatically because of the recent quadrennial assessment by the Assessors Office. First thing I want to ask you about it is that there are many properties here in the city of New Orleans that are exempt, that have been exempt. And so the city council came up with a plan to get the assessor to tell you guys how many of those properties there are and how much taxes they owe. How long they have been owing those taxes. Can you tell me what's going on with that property?
Let me, let me, let me try to break that down for you. It's a little bit more detailed than just that.
That's right.
There are multiple types of properties that are exempt. Now, what they didn't mess with down there was the fact that you had businesses that had tax exemptions that had expired. Folgers being one, but Folgers not being the only one. That is egregious. That is absolutely ridiculous that they got the tax breaks in order to do the business, or to create the businesses, create the jobs, all that's valid and legitimate. But those tax breaks subsequently expired. That's how that whole discussion started in that there are many businesses, well, we don't know many, we know that there are some, that owe millions of dollars in taxes that have not paid them because they are still being carried as exempt from their shift. Now, the other side of that is where they exempt properties. And this is where wheels come off, y'all. And y'all get mad with me, I'm gonna just have to have you mad. Because there are only about little better than forty percent of the properties in New Orleans actually pay property taxes.
Right.
That is a real problem. Now, I am a Christian, born and raised in a Baptist church. I ran a nonprofit for many years. I'm very closely affiliated with my alma mater, the Good University. I have multiple connections to many agencies that are tax exempt. So I have no deep of problem with any of them. But there are instances where we really need to look at what's actually being exempt. Because let me make this real simple for you. The more people carrying the load, the lighter the load is to carry. Now, when you crunch down forty percent of the property paying taxes for a hundred percent of the need, it's a lot heavier on that forty percent. Now, let's talk about, I'm gonna use churches. If you baptize and bathe, if you marry and people, if you send the people on the glory with their fumes, you ought to be tax exempt. However, if you've got a laundromat or you've got an apartment building or you've got an office building and you've got a whole string of houses that you are renting, maybe they need to be on the tax road. Now, there is no problem, and trust me, I don't want nobody telling me I'm a first grader to help because I'm not trying to get there by talking about taxing churches. But the fact of the matter is, many times those investment properties are not necessarily carrying out the mission of what the tax exemption was for.
Right, so let me just interrupt you. So you're talking about churches that their buildings are taxed in. But churches also own a laundromat down the street or associated with it.
That's also tax exempt.
And it's also tax exempt. And that's what you're saying, because we need to have a drawing, we need to draw one.
We need to draw the line so that many of those currently taxed and properties can be put on the tax road because of the name. When you tell me about your nonprofit mission and you're there to help poor families, I respect that, I work in that world. But if those same poor families are being crunched carrying a hundred percent of the load and only forty percent of them, you're starting to weaken the purpose. Alright, we're putting pressure on folks that really can't fight back. So we really need to look at expanding that. And I can, y'all, I don't want everybody to get confused. This is not about putting arbitrary anything. If by chance, your nonprofit is committed to helping young women grow and develop and define grown women, then that's fine. Your building, when you're doing those classes, when you're doing that education, when you're providing that, leave that exempt. But don't tell me that that investment property you got down the street that you rent as a parking lot ought to still be exempt. Office buildings along Porter Street and Howard Avenue that are owned by the church. I get the fact that the sanctuary, again, when you baptize and then funeralize and then save and sold, Mr. that's all good with me. I get the fact that the sanctuary, again, when you baptize and then funeralize and then save and sulk, listen, that's all good with me. But your office building that you are charging market rate rent on, maybe we need to look at that.
Maybe.
Alright? And that is what, you know, that, that's part of this whole looking at the exemption issue. Now, this is very real, y'all. It's all good to talk about taxing as long as you talk about taxing somebody else. And what's gonna happen is the wheels are gonna come off. As soon as we start talking about taxing your church, or your nonprofit, or your university, then all of a sudden, oh no. Don't tax mine. But you gotta tax things. But the fact of the matter is the structure that we've got now, there are so many exemptions that we really need to look at trying to balance that. Because all of you in here who pay property taxes, I know you struggling. Unless you hit the power ball last month? You likely got a problem right now in dealing with it. And if you made it so that more people were paying, that impact could be less.
Okay, so now, after all of that, I, I'm interested to hear your view on Amendment Four. How do we handle Amendment Four, given that context that you just laid out?
I am vehemently supporting Amendment Four. Those shark terminal taxes, we need them. Now, shark terminals did not kill affordable housing. Let's be real.
Wait, wait, wait. That's Amendment Four is Amendment Four to the Constitution, which allows the city to provide exemptions across the board to, we don't know who, because the city hasn't given this plan yet. Uh, so how is it that, given that you think that, um, churches need to pay taxes on, uh, businesses that they own, that the city should now take back, I'm just asking the question, take back tax exemptions from property?
That whole Amendment Four is related to this crisis that we have with having, of being able to extract resources from these businesses that are coming in with these multi-layered shark terminals. That's how this whole thing started with Amendment Four. That's what this whole thing is about. It's allowing us, and maybe one of us is confused and maybe, maybe I am. But my appreciation of that is that that is allowing us to give the extract money that we need from those entities in order to help us with affordable housing. That's where that money's going. And, and we gotta have, and let me tell you, typically people who have ain't looking to get a win. Most people with money ain't trying to get a win. And these commercial entities need to be helping us provide affordable housing. And that, to me, is not negotiable. If you want to come in and have your quasi hotel development in my city, then you got a right to do that. But I always got a right to tell you that in order to do that, you got to help us with our housing rights. And, 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 and just let me get this there with a second. This whole thing about affordable housing has got real money. It's got real kind of a little in people's mind. Because as soon as you start to see affordable housing, there's this immediate belief on some people to have that you're talking about a specific racial group. You're talking about a specific economic group. You're talking about a specific educational group. No. It affects all of us. Affordable housing not only affects people that are less economically empowered, it affects people who are going to work every day. Police officers, librarians, people that work here in Katmai Istanbul, people that go to different jobs every day, who work to support their families every day, or getting to the point where they ain't gonna be able to stay here. So when you start talking about affordable housing, please don't make the mistake of believing that we strictly talking about a X, a Y, or a Z group. It does not have a color. It does not have an economic stripe. It does not have those who are uneducated and undereducated who work in just the minimum wage. No. It affects every single person in this community regardless of whatever your demographic is. And I am arguing on my belief that we all gotta come together to address this. Because that is the one thing that is the common denominator for all of us. We all got to stay somewhere. And unless we take hold of this, and look, y'all, I got beat up about this and I get beat up on a regular basis, but I equated this to, heroin has been a problem in the black community for generations. And it's been here for a long time killing people. But you know what the difference between a dope team heroin junkie and an overyard addict is? It's the color of your skin. So as long as the dope team heroin junkies were dying, living under the bridge, losing everything, wasn't no big deal. But as soon as it got to affecting some soccer moms, now they got crisis. Now they got epidemic. Or now they got to hug them and pray for them because they need prayer there. But all before it was okay to throw them away, flush them down the toilet if you care. Well, that is where we're headed with this affordable housing issue. As long as it's affecting poor people, nobody's ringing the bell. As long as it's affecting people that make minimal way of doing, that's their problem. But it is eking out. It is starting to affect everybody and we don't need to sit down here and pretend like it's not going to happen. We need to be very intentional and try to address this. And the definition of insanity is repeating the same behavior expecting a different outcome? We need to understand what we did by ignoring that problem and not do this again. We need to be intentional and diligent in trying to fix it.
Let's shift to the Sewer and Water Board. You can move on to something else. So, why does it keep blinding?
Alright, now, this is a very simple thing that most people and many people may not want to hear. And I need y'all to walk real slowly through this thing. The Sewer and Water Board today, this day, is operating far better than it has in decades. There's no following. For the first time ever, you have all your parties involved sitting at a table, making sure that it's all connected and functioning. Now, that's the base. Now, let's talk about what happened. We have a one hundred year old system. Now, think back a hundred years ago. Kansas County Istanbul wasn't here in this current court. I guarantee that parking lot that's outside was not there. So when they put that system in, that grass that was out there was able to absorb some of the water. You've got a modern system with an antiquated, you've got a modern city with an antiquated system. So now you have far more pressure on the drainage system today than what you had when the system was put in. Alright? So that the water has to go somewhere. Now, all y'all that got the views got cans of air out. And the thing that's blowing your keyboard out. You can compress air, but you cannot compress water. Water is extremely dense. It is heavy and it ain't easy to move. Now, we are both blessed and cursed with where we live. Where we are right now, we are below sea level. Which needs to get the water out, you gotta pump it out. It can't rain out because that's the water here, that's the rain down, and we gotta pump it out. Now, being that that is a law of physics that we cannot adjust, the reality of it is, is that the pumping system will only pump an inch and a half of water the first hour and a half an inch every hour thereafter. Alright? Now, keep walking with it. In today's world, whether or not you wanted to leave it or not, whether or not the President of the United States believes in it or not, global warming is happening. It has happened. Now, those of you all who are of my age, I'm gonna take you back to the May third flood of nineteen seventy-eight. Whole lot of war. But it was ten years until we had another one like that. Last year, or this year from last year, we have had four storms within a year that dumped tremendous amounts of water. That last night down in the C D D, that was nine inches of water in thirty minutes. There is no system on the planet that could not, who got their water out of that thing. The fact that global warming is here is something that we got to deal with. Now, are we intentional in trying to maintain what we have? Yes, but it's not enough.
So, so what is this? How do we fix this? I don't think you're gonna get any argument from anybody here that we're gonna get more rain, more frequent. And we got this antiquated system in the modern city. What do we do to stop flooding?
You ain't gonna stop flooding, let's be real. We're not gonna stop it. We can try to get it regulated or try to mediate it as best as we can. But keep in mind where you are. You're in an area that is below sea level and you're in a period now that you will have an order of months of rain. There is no technology on this earth that is going to move that kind of water to stop flooding. It's just not gonna happen. What we can do is be far more intentional going how we manage the water. Now, walk with it, just get there with a minute. Everybody here should be doing all they can to make sure you have as much green space or as much plant life around your house, around your business as possible. We would be foliage after the storm, which is also helping with this problem. The more trees that are there, the more flowers that are there, all of those things suck up water. Rain value has to be incorporated in everybody's lifestyle. The only way that we can work with this water is to manage it. We can't stop it from coming. But we gotta be acknowledging the fact that it is going to come and we gotta be intentional in dealing with it. Now, one of the things I'm very proud of this council has instituted, nothing moving forward is gonna be built without a stormwater management program. Everything that's coming up now, they have got to incorporate stormwater management in, which is something that previously had not been done. Now, one of the hats y'all have is children's board Zulu Club. Alright? If three dudes get out of the corner, brought on in, and all split together, Zulu Club is flooding. It has flooded repeatedly. Alright? Now, go over to Joe Yager at the Jump Hotel. He floods too. What's in between Zulu and the jump? That brand new medical complex that was built without any stormwater management. But now, I'm nobody's engineer, but if I add one and one and get three, something out of all. All of that new concrete out there that used to be green space, that were housing that had grass in between them and denim. Alright? Now, I don't know if that's the cause or not, but I know those two points are about wood and mud for what that medical complex is and they both have sand and water repeated.
What do you think about sea level? Do you think it's contributing to the rain?
I don't think, no, I do not, I really don't. Uh, I've heard people with that theory. I just think that right now we are in a period where you're getting an order of amount of rain.
And that's gonna continue, Congressman?
That's gonna continue.
So, so can we put enough barrels in people's jaws and plant enough grass to solve this?
When you say solve it, no, I wanna be very, I'm not trying to prophesize. You ain't gonna solve it.
Okay.
Alright? There is no solving. We are under sea level. Now, what we can do is try to manage it as best we can. So instead of having a footboard industry with these waste water management efforts, you might be able to get three or four inches industry. But there will be sand and water because you gotta pump it out. Alright, whatever gets into the street has to be physically moved.
Can you explain a layout, the Sewer and Water Board's plan for reducing the street level flood from a foot to three inches?
Ideally, it is gonna take tens of billions of dollars to come in here and repair much of the drainage system that is old and corroded. During something. And unless the talking of Siam or somebody comes in here with that, we're gonna be a long time trying to get to that. So again, the best thing that we can do is try to manage what we have most efficiently. Now, the luck of people sitting out here lying to you and saying you can give that fixed upon, that ain't gonna happen, y'all. And the one thing we're not getting from you sideways, I don't talk to others. The reality of it is that we live in a city that is below sea level and we've got an antiquated system, we gotta work with it. Because it, and, and ten to millions of dollars that none of us have to go replace.
Thank you, Congressman. We got some questions of the audience about real.
Mr. Bryant?
Nobody can read my writing. Include me.
I'm a little, it's two questions. I'm a little confused that supporters of the constitutional amendment four do not want to be specific or even suggest an accountability measure on how the exclusion of taxes is gonna work on the property that is dedicated, uh, they say for, for affordable housing. That's the first question. Why isn't it that you cannot be specific? You cannot show us how this is gonna be accounted? I mean, you're just asking us to give, give the mayor approval for excluding more, more housing, I mean, more, more property from the road. That's the exact opposite of what you're saying.
Well, let me clarify for you. I have not, not been transparent at all, so I don't know what you're talking about. Whoever you're talking about, you won't talk about me. Because I'm gonna tell you everything I know. Now, what I do know is that giving developers incentives to create affordable housing is something that we need to do. Now, if you want to argue the fact that adding additional exemption, exemptions may not be the best thing, I'll let you argue, I'll let you say that. But at the end of the day though, the reality of it is, is that we need to have as many people as possible helping us to address this affordable housing crisis. Now, we cannot beat developers up and make them develop affordable housing. We can't do that. What we can do though is try to create incentives that they do that. Now, when you lose the tax exemption on this particular property and then create X number of affordable houses, that's happened, but you gotta decide, which is the win? Is the win getting taxes on this building or is the win getting these affordable houses? Now, if you do not have this in place, there's no guarantee that they're gonna build affordable houses. So you gotta figure out what is the win? What, what is it that you're trying to accomplish? Now, I realize that these are complicated, multifaceted issues and there are going to be some gives and some gets. But at the end of the day, there is no one size that fits all. You can't say that, hey, look, this is it, this is done. We gotta try to think out a way to make this stuff work. And that whole thing, man, is about providing an incentive to have people with resources come in here and build these things that are, we need desperately. That's what it's about. But I'm not trying to be, if I haven't explained it clearly, then forgive me, but that is my appreciation of it. And I'm not trying to hide anything.
I, 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 I need, uh, a number of people have come to us. A number of people have come to us and said, I can't clean my water, my sewer and water. Five, we looked at it for, for months. We took, we, we worked on it. Four hundred, five hundred dollar bills. I went out and checked a number of them. No leaks, no swimming pool, no watering grass. I mean, it's, it's unreal. We found out that these bills were being estimated. And we still have, you know, have people bills being estimated. Now they come up with a new plan, want to take the average of the last four months. Well, you know, it's, it's, we've asked for the Sewer and Water Board to go out neighborhood to neighborhood and talk to the people, find out what's, what's going on. I think the Sewer and Water Board don't wanna know.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant.
Is that a question?
Actually, one question, I think probably has to do with meter readers. Can we, can we probably get more meter readers out there because bills are being estimated instead of people going out and reading the actual meter?
There are not enough meter readers. Let's be real. Alright? There are not enough meter readers to go and read every meter and that is what matters. Now, ideally, I'd love to be able to tell them to go hire another five thousand people to be able to read the meters every month. But then if you hire five thousand people to go read the meters, who gonna pay for that? Alright? Now, I do know that, I'm sorry, what was that? Well, you pay the Sewer and Water Board, either you gonna take it out your left pocket or you gonna take it out your right, but it's coming out your pocket. Alright, so let's, 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 just come on, let's, let's, let's talk real now. The fact of the matter is, is that the bill estimation probably is not the best formula. But what is the best formula? When you will not physically have enough meter readers to go out there and actually do it. Now, eventually, perhaps one day when those smart readers get installed, you'll be able to look at it on an hour to hour basis, but that's not here yet. We are digging ourselves out of a hole that has been dug for generations. Make no delusions about this. This is not a baby that we created, but this is one that we are charged. This is not a baby that we created, but this is one that we are charged with raising right now. This is a problem that we inherited and we are diligent in trying to get there. But is it gonna be fixed tomorrow? No, really, it ain't. It ain't gonna be fixed tomorrow, but trust me in the fact that right now, you do have an administration that understands there's a problem. This is going to go too long. I want you to go back not very long ago. This town got kicked down, well repeated. Nothing happened. You'd be surprised, man, the number of calls and, and nasty emails I got complaining, gonna be found in the car at the mall. But the fact of the matter is, at least we found the car. At least we're looking to find out what the problem is. Before, you didn't even have that. People are mad about the catch phases. I get that, but it weren't being cleaned at all. At least we cleaning them now. And so by no means am I asking you to give us the pat on the back. I'm not really despite the fall. But I need you to acknowledge the fact that at least we're on the right track.
And I, and I, I get your point that, that we're on the right track, but I think it's very difficult for those who are still receiving ingorbidently high bills to get excited that we're on the right track when we're dealing with elderly people and people of disability and people of fixed income.
And they're not turning people off. So if you have to contest the bill.
Wait, 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 hold on, hold on, hold on. They're not turning people off? Wait, 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 hold on.
My appreciation is that they're no longer turning people off. If you contest your bill, they will review it and try to give you a payment plan. If it's deemed to be incorrect, they'll adjust it. If it's deemed to be correct, they will put a payment plan that you can reach. And that whole foolish, silly going on.
Well, let me ask you this, we'll, 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 because I, I do wanna say this. The payment plan that these people are being offered, y'all know what that is? How much? Uh, they, what they require you to put down is twenty-five percent. Now, now, what, for a person again on a fixed income or a, an elderly person or disabled person who gets a check once a month, uh, that probably around seven hundred dollars in that, a twenty-five percent, Congressman, there's a whole lot to put down. And the Sault Ste. Luan Board is refusing to work with people. Can we get your support in getting that decreased from twenty-five percent down to five percent so that people can afford it?
I don't know if I can get it to five percent, so I'm not committed to that. But I will tell you though, I've had multiple conversations with them. Now, I need you all to walk real forward because I can talk quick. There is a state law that prohibits the Sault Ste. Luan Board from giving water away. Alright? Now, that's a state law. We tried to have it so that nobody had to do anything other than come in and give you a five dollar a month plan till you paid it off. That was deemed illegal by the attorney. I will find out and I will report back to you exactly where that process is. But I do know the request has been made to make those payments far more attainable and reachable because I get it. I get it, you got a big stupid bill, twenty-five percent of a dollar is a lot less than twenty-five percent of a thousand dollars. I get that. Alright? But I can tell you that efforts are in the way to try to make the thing so that people who are struggling to get it paid are going to get it paid. I can tell you that's happening. I'll probably mention over that.
And yet, we, we look forward to you introducing something to the city council, uh, or to the Sault Ste. Luan Board that is a lower down payment than twenty-five percent.
Let, let me get this. You didn't, you didn't hear what I'm saying.
I, I heard you.
What I'm telling you is that whatever that state law, we've already gone down that road.
Okay.
We've already gone down that road and I was told that that was illegal because it violates the state statute. Alright? So, no, I'm not going to do something that I know I cannot do legally. What I will tell you though is that I'm aware of it and working to try to get a fix around it. Now, that I will pledge to you, commit to you, stand up, write it down, sign it if you want it. But no, I'm not going to do something that legally I cannot do.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Alright, then we're out of time for Dr. J.J. Thank you, sir. We always appreciate you coming to Justice and Beyond for your hand, sir. Thank you so much, sir. Listen, y'all, we're, we're, we're really behind y'all, but I need for you to sit down and listen. Hold up, sit down and listen to Chuck Perkins and this eighteen-eleven history of the slave rebellion. Please welcome him. Uh, sorry to get him up late. We're rocking and rolling tonight. Chuck Perkins. How's everybody doing today? I wanna thank all the people from Justice and Beyond for asking me to talk about the eighteen-eleven slave uprising. Um, you know, I, here's a book, uh, it's called, um, American Uprising. I actually read it like a couple, couple of years ago. And it was, uh, the author is a guy from Yale. His name is Daniel Ross Mucin. And, uh, it's, uh, oh, Harvard. Oh, okay. He's, I'm sorry, he's from Harvard. I, I misremembered. For some reason, I knew it was, I knew it was Ivy League, but the guy's from Harvard. And one thing I do wanna, uh, mention about him is that, uh, when he, um, came down and started doing the research for this book, um, he said that, um, he couldn't find any information anywhere about the eighteen-eleven slave uprising. Um, but then, well, there only one place and Brother Leon Waters had did some research and Leon, um, has a book as well. I have that book. I tried to grab it off my books, y'all, before I came here, just before I came, I couldn't. Um, I couldn't locate it, but Brother Leon Waters had did the research earlier. Uh, now, one of the things I would like to mention before we talk about this particular slave uprising, it seems as if in the past, uh, that it's always been a concerted effort to, to bury any instances of black creativity, black genius, black resistance, especially black resistance. Um, this happened, this uprising that happened in eighteen-eleven, it happened, um, they call it the German coast, it's up around La Platte. I was interested, interested in knowing that because I've known that Louisiana had, uh, you know, French and Spanish and African and Cuban and Haitian. But, you know, you go a little, little up around La Platte, they call that the, the German coast. So that happened in January of eighteen-eleven. And as you recall, this is, uh, only about maybe eight years after the Haitian Revolution, the, that great, um, revolution in Haiti. And, um, even that is, uh, they, the, the people here in Louisiana tried to do everything they possibly could to stop, uh, uh, slaves in Louisiana from, from knowing about that, that, um, that uprising. Because, you know, I mean, as common sense will tell you, if you got slaves, uh, going around talking about, uh, uh, a successful insurrection that happened in San Dim, then, you know, maybe they might get this wild idea, um, right here in, in Louisiana. So, so, um, so they certainly were, they, they did not want, um, people in Louisiana to know about that. Um, Dr. Gerald Horn, he has a book called The Apocalypse of Southern Colonialism. And that's one of the things that he talks about in this book. Um, there, he cites, um, several instances, um, in his book, um, where there were, there were instances of arson, where slaves were burning things down, but they never wanted to talk about that. I even had a conversation with Brother Leon Waters who did the, the uprising in eighteen-eleven. And he's, um, Leon thinks that, uh, when the French water burned down one of those times, you know, he seen some, some, I, I guess, uh, evidence someplace that would suggest that, that might have been slaves too, you know? But anyway, um, I guess the power that be, they don't, they never wanted, you know, slaves to, to get this idea that somehow they could resist, that they could defend themselves, that they could lash out against the system that was, uh, trying to save them. Now, I think that there's some interesting things that happened in eighteen-eleven. Number one, it was the largest insurrection on the continent of, uh, on, on North American continent. Um, by the time it ended, there were about five hundred slaves, just to, to put it, to, to compare what happened in, um, with, uh, with, uh, Nat Turner. I think they were, they were less than a hundred slaves. Now, I think in the case of Nat Turner, there were sixty-one, um, I guess, whites murdered there. And, um, in terms of what's, what's been reported, um, for the, um, uprising in eighteen-eleven, there were only two. But folk like Leon Waters and even Dr. Gerald Horn, he, if he was here, they would probably say, well, you can't trust that. Because again, they were trying to minimize the whole thing and, and never wanted to, to appear to, to be something. In fact, that's one of the things that the author here suggested. They wanted to just trivialize it and make it seem as if it was a non-provetting. Um, so, it seems that three, the, um, um, three of the main parties, um, here, um, in the, the uprising that happened in eighteen-eleven were two, um, Kuuk and Kumano. And, um, they were brought to Louisiana, um, from Africa. They were a part of, I think, the Kan tribe. And the, the third, um, guy was, uh, Charles Desalines. Charles Desalines was a mulatto. He was probably the son of, uh, someone from one of the, one of the plantations. And Charles Desalines was a, was an overseer. And, um, you know, I see it as being a really interesting character because one of the things, um, a lot of times, you know, folk, we, 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 Malcolm X's autobiography, we see the Malcolm X movie. And Malcolm X had, um, let me see how you call it, this, this, this saying, this thing he would say quite often. He would talk, he would use this analogy about the field negro and the house negro, right? And I grew up always, I always wanted to be a field negro. Because of course, if you live in the house and you, you know, you were a little too close to the master and you more prone to accept, uh, you know, the, the master's way of doing things. But when you, when you really, really sit down and think about it, that's, uh, that's kinda, um, uh, too simplistic, you understand? I mean, things are never that hunky-dory. There were probably some people who lived in, who worked in the field, who were treated like dogs, but somehow were so beaten down that they weren't able to accept that and, and never could imagine having a life that was anything different from the life they were living. And there were probably some people who were shown favor inside the house and every day of their life, they won't, they probably went to sleep trying to think things to themselves, how he might be able to kill this person, you understand? And so Charles Desalines is a, a brilliant example of that. Because he was a mulatto. He, uh, based on what the, 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 the author's, uh, the way he saw it, um, Charles Desalines was a light-skinned mulatto who made white folk feel a little more comfortable, you know, trusting him as a, as a loyal, at, uh, you know, right-hand man, loyal advisor. And so, um, Desalines was an overseer and, and I can remember reading this in the book that there were times when he actually played the part, you know? Say like if he, uh, you know, if it's in the day and, you know, slaves out there working, he was out there acting like he was cracking the whip by day, you know, just playing the role trying to, you know, play it all the way, um, through. And, uh, but at night, he was, uh, you know, he was leading with Kuuk and Kumano. And so the idea for them was they're gonna start this, um, they were gonna start out around La Platte and then they were gonna march, they were gonna take it all the way to New Orleans. And, and they, they, they thought that if they could get to New Orleans, a place that had a significant amount of slaves, that if they could, if they could get here, that they could, that they might be able to have the kind of success that those slaves, um, had in, in Haiti. And, um, as I, as I said earlier, it was about five hundred of them. And, um, the guy who, um, I, I have his name. His, um, his last name is Manuel, I think. He, um, was the guy who Charles Desalines worked for. And so he was the first one who they went to his plantation and killed him. And then they burned down two other plantations. But there was some guy who they, they missed and that guy was able to, to slip away. And he was able to get on a boat and, or something and go across the river. And, and once he was able to get across the river, he was able to, um, to, I guess, inform the, all of the whites, you know, what was happening. They organized, um, militia. And, and so they, 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 they stopped the rebellion, um, in Kent. If I'm not mistaken, near where the, uh, the airport is out there in, in Kent. And, uh, you know, one of the things, uh, the author talks about there is Kuuk and Kumano. They, they were not killed, um, during a confrontation with an militia. Um, so they actually had like a little, uh, trial and, but they never gave up any slave. They never said that, hey, was this guy over there? You know, they never tried to, they just, they accepted responsibility. And in fact, Kuuk, he's, he told them that he was the one who put that, I, I guess, that, you know, the ax over there and the, the Manuel guy who owned the, the first plantation. He gotta know that I, I'm the one who did that. And of course, they, uh, they were all, um, were all executed. And, um, you know, what happened after, I think it was nineteen of them were executed. And what happened after, you know, give you an idea of, of, I, I guess, the, the climate in this part of Louisiana. So their heads were chopped off and their heads were placed on, on stakes. And it was, uh, placed for about, uh, thirty miles, uh, on the levee, uh, along, along the river. And, you know, this is the opposite of, 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 of not wanting slaves to know about, about insurrections, right? You don't want them to know about insurrections because they, they might get some wild idea of being able to, to do that. And, uh, you know, but, but now you take a, you take a head and you put it on a stake and you put it on the levee and let it grow because you want anybody who passed by and see that to, to know that, you know, that you, you know, that this could potentially, uh, that this could potentially happen to you, right? And so, again, that happened in, um, eighteen, um, eleven. And, uh, in, in, in some ways, um, I really believe that the, putting the, the heads on stakes, to me, is, uh, there's some, it's, it's somehow connected to, um, these, these monuments that we have. And I think the only difference between a monument with a, with a, with a, with a riding head and maybe one of the liberty monument is that, you know, the riding head is probably gonna, you know, at some point it's gonna disappear, you understand? Like, you put something like the liberty monument on the Nell Street and that could be a re-modelling, you know, for, you know, five hundred years if you gotta stay up there that long. And so, anyway, uh, um, so that's really the, the Reader's Digest, uh, version of this. I, I do wanna say that around the same time I was reading about this, you know, I, I read, um, um, three other books as well about, uh, Louisiana. In eighteen sixty-six, uh, um, there was the Mechanic Institute massacre, um, that happened right over here back in Nell Street, um, next to where the Roosevelt Ho- Hotel is. Um, that was, and, and, and I think there were about sixty-two people died only because they were trying to reconvene, um, so, so that black people could have the right to vote. And, and this is after the Civil War in Portland, Louisiana, is admitted back in the Union as a Mechanic Institute massacre. Then in eighteen seventy-three, on Easter Sunday, there were about a hundred and fifty, uh, black men and women who were massacred in Colfax, Louisiana, about twenty miles north of, of, uh, of Alexandria. Uh, again, Easter Sunday, people blocked in trying to, to vote. And then, um, in about eighteen eighty-seven, um, there was another massacre in, when I read that guy's book, it was in Thibodeaux, Louisiana. And, um, and it was basically the same as what this guy said about, um, this insurrection in eighteen-eleven. He could, he, he was surprised at how little information was available on the, on the, that massacre in, um, in eighteen-eleven. And I think it was the, I think it was the, whoever wrote the Colfax massacre, he made a point that, you know, that, that made me, that's kinda stunned me a little bit. He said that, you know, there was a lot of blood flowing in Louisiana, um, during reconstruction and post-reconstruction, right? But by the turn of the century, that, you know, there was a, 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 a lot happening in other parts of the country and not as much in Louisiana. And, and, and I was wondering, I wondered if by that time, you know, like, of course, in, in Colfax, like the people, they're organizing to vote, there are new amendments to the United States Constitution. And people go there, they're organized, they believe that, hey, things are different. There, there are amendments to the Constitution that will, that will back us and if some, something like this happens and that, that people pay for it, that this government will be there to support us. And the, a hundred and fifty people were massacred in Colfax and not one person went to jail. So I think maybe by the turn of the century, people in Louisiana had already learned, learned some valuable lessons that, that they had no government, no constitutions or no other laws that were gonna protect you. And so, might as well just protect yourself. And that's sort of like what I, what I still advise. Um, so if anybody had any questions, uh, please, if anybody had any questions, you may ask it at this time. Regarding this presentation, I'm not in the moment, but... from an office in the moment, but...
And Chuck, uh, we'd be for being the singer here and the poet, but I know you're familiar with the Revealers Song by Desalines, a day song about the eighteen-eleven, the insurrection, and the lady band that, that, that the revealers had made that song in nineteen ninety-four, one of the lines was like, "Charles Desalines was nation born, came into this world when a black man was strong, saw his people shackles and change, trying to make, uh, uh, the world a different peanut, basically called You Can't Keep Me," that was a fantastic song. And, uh, people should listen to Revealers Song, and that changed me when I first heard it. And I think that Kathy, uh, uh, yeah, she did a play on that and, uh, and did it, uh, I saw that, but, you know, if you had a copy on that, I would...
Yeah, only thing I'd say about that, I did read somewhere where there was some, what they wondered if Desalines himself had, had some connection with Haiti, if maybe he had come from Haiti. But now, um, I can say, I just kind of like, well, since I know I was telling you, I tried to just, um, breeze through some of the stuff, uh, uh, peruse through some of the stuff out of the library. And this guy seemed to think that Desalines was born in Louisiana and was the, the son of one of the, the, the plantations. But, you know, it's just, um, this is American uprising, that's, um, that's...
Thank you, sir. Uh, are there any other things we can learn of ourselves in this given time from that eighteen-eleven, um, revolution?
Yeah, I, I, I think there, there, there are some things, you know? I really do believe that, I guess one of the things that I think, like, sometimes I look at poor, um, communities, I look at, uh, the amount, I look at prison populations, I, I look at people struggling to survive. And a lot of times, if you go and talk to a lot of the people who live in those communities, right? Most of them who, most of them believe that the reason they are where they are is because the people around them are, are lazy, that the people around them are, there's something wrong with the people around them, right? That they don't, they don't all understand, well, let me just say this, I believe that there are systems that have helped to create communities like that, that have helped to create poor people and to keep them living on the margins and to, and to keep them a half a step away from prison and stuff, and, and, and whatnot. And I think as long as we have those sort of amenities in our community, then we, sometimes we'll have to deal with the wrath that would come, um, from them. And collectively, if we could, you know, stop blaming victims and try to, you know, come up with ways to, 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 to lift people up, that we could all benefit from that, so, that's...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chuck. You, you're so wonderful. And, you know, Chuck has a saying about intellectual curiosity.
Yeah, I always say ignorance is not a crime, that crime is a lack of intellectual curiosity. And what I mean by that is I try to let people know, I tell kids, I say, you know, we can get, I was just talking to like some eighteen and nineteen-year-olds, I say, we can get one of the smartest guys on the planet, such, you know, whoever he is and, and, uh, whoever she is, and get them to come in this room, and one of us, we're gonna know something that they don't know. And so just because you don't know something, it's like, that's no, no big deal. I say not all of us, even the most brilliant among, among us, we, when you, when you think all there is to know, we might, you know, but even the smartest amongst us, we, we are so limited in our understanding. And so if somebody can come to you and can, and can, and can offer you something outside of your limited knowledge, for you to automatically be dismissive of it, just because you've never heard of it, then that's a crime, right? But as long as you have intellectual curiosity and you open to things, doesn't mean that you necessarily have to, to, to take everything somebody presents to you, but at least give it a, a chance, you know, think about it, consider it.
I'd like to, to, uh, to sound on eighteen eighty-eight massacre in, in Tbilisi. There were seven hundred families in, uh, in the past where Tbilisi, they, they talked, and several past, uh, that had been organized by the, I don't know, I don't think, uh, international workers of the world. And they, 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 they organized those people, uh, mostly of Latin. They demanded one dollar a day paid. And when, when the owners refused to pay, they removed themselves off the owner's land and set up camps. And Mercer Foster, who, uh, Governor Foster's grandfather, became, before he became governor, he was a senator, and he organized, wrote, spoke, the, the, uh, the landowners with two hundred repealing riders, and they were massacred, massacred in Tbilisi. And it says that they jumped the bodies, the, the bodies. Uh, that was very shocking, being around, uh, across the state, and, uh, one was people around there still, still talking about it.
You know, I think, uh, I think they were trying to get a pay reason, I'm not gonna say that.
Right, right.
One dollar. And, and, and I want, I want, I want, I want to stick at this one thing, Pat maybe, um, he reminded me about this, about the Hope, about the Colfax massacre. And so after I read that book, the Colfax massacre, I actually took a ride and I drove to Colfax, Louisiana. And I think what prompted me to do it, uh, there was a lady who actually, who was, who had me listening to my radio show when I was on WBOK, and she called and said that she lived in Colfax. And so I drove there to meet with her. And so I got a chance to see all the places where all of this happened, when this massacre happened. And, you know, one of the worst things is, to, to say that it's two thousand and nineteen, that there is a cemetery in Colfax, Louisiana, right across the street from the church, and there's a monument that's in this cemetery. And it says that this monument is erected to, um, to the, the, the three brave white men who died fighting for white supremacy. That's what the monument says, written right now today in two thousand and nineteen. Now, how can you be the pastor of a church like that? And, 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 you know, I don't know, but that, it's still there. It's still there right now being two thousand and nineteen.
One last question. Oh, come on, dude. What's up, Chuck? Some of the things that you were talking about just now, we found, for example, this group you said a few days ago.
Sam Greenlee, he's from Chicago, I met him a couple of times.
Uh, uh, all, and, and some of these systems that was there in teens, eighteen hundreds, that is still relevant today, that is still relevant today, we don't quite yet, that there were old systems, uh, groups of, like, human races or something like that, but, but it's just amazing to watch, to see that history, and to see how it's extended together. It hasn't, it's not exactly the same, but it is the same. Yeah, so we need to deal with it.
I, I wanted, I wanted to, um, to, to add to what you just said, um, and, and, and please, don't y'all let me forget, because we doing like a slave in, in Africa for the eighteen-eleven rebellion, Brother Ernest, he's gonna be dealing with that, so I want to mention that before I go. But when the brother right here, he said that some of the stuff is the same that it's been, right? And so, recently I read The Philadelphia Negro by W. E. DuBois. And so that book was written in like about eighteen ninety-four. And so DuBois, the reason he looked at Philadelphia, because Philadelphia was, had the third largest population of black people after, I think, Washington DC, New Orleans, and then it was Philadelphia. And so, you know, some of them were already up in Philadelphia, there were three and ninety-nine blacks coming up from slavery, leaving the South, going up to Philadelphia, right? And so some are going there looking for jobs, the lucky ones who could find jobs, as DuBois pointed out, that people were paying them less to do the same job. Some were looking for houses, the ones who were, who were lucky to, to find a house, the people were, were charging them more for that same house that they were charging other people less for. And so you got people living on the margins, and as a result, people self-medicating, they started to drink, you got people starting to, you know, get involved with criminal type stuff, just doing what they needed to do to survive. And the interesting thing is when I'm reading this thing by DuBois that was written in the late eighteen hundreds, if you change the names and all that kind of stuff, you would swear that it was somebody talking about the, the way this thing is happening right now today in two thousand and nineteen. But DuBois wrote about it over a hundred and something years ago. And by the way, his, his, um, DuBois's research, um, they call him the father of sociology, because after he wrote that book, he changed the way, um, the field of sociology was, was done, so it was, his research was kind of, was so respected that, I mean, he, he had a profound, um, influence on universities and, and even other scholars who were doing that sort of research, so I just want to say that. And Chuck, when we're talking, while we're talking about injustices done to brown and black people, I, I, I watched the other day, uh, while I finished watching the movie When They See Us. And I don't know if anybody has seen that in here, but you need to see it, it's about the Central Park Five and what happened to the five young black men. I started to watch it a couple of weeks ago, I got upset, couldn't watch it, it's like six episodes. If that movie was, if that movie was four and a half hours, me and my youngest daughter watched it all year. If it was four and a half hours, I cried like a baby, at least two of them hours. And one time, I think I even cried out. Yeah. Yeah. It is, it is, it is, so, When They See Us, about the Central Park Five, and my point is, I started watching it, I wasn't in the best of mood, so I was getting hangry, and so the other day, I said, okay, I, I'm in a better mood, so I, I watched the whole thing, and then, but like you said, for three hours straight or whatever it was, and it, and it just, it will open your eyes to the injustice that's still being done to young black men. And, and, and really, what's really upsetting is that the current occupant of the White House took out an ad for eighty-five thousand dol, uh, uh, ad costing eighty-five thousand dollars, saying that these five young men who were exonerated, I shouldn't tell you, this is a spoiler alert, spoiler alert, who were exonerated should be given the death penalty. And the current occupant of the White House still has not apologized, even after they were exonerated and paid forty-one million dollars, he still has not apologized for what he did, has still not apologized. But, see, I got, I got my blood pressure, it's in there right now. But I say that to say that everybody here needs to watch that movie, When They See Us, about the Central Park Five, it's on Netflix, uh, go, go watch it. Um, uh, Chuck, that, that's all the trouble, but thank you for liking it.